I see her mouth moving, yes. Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
And motion carries. And we are moving on to gratitudes. I'll go ahead and start and kick it off. I am very grateful for the break. For spring break, that was great to have. My family and I went to Virginia to visit a college down there and just reminded me how much. Not only my daughter has learned in the past years, but how much the teachers and support staff and everybody have poured into her. And I'm just very grateful for just everybody that has invested in my daughter's life. So, thank you for that. Anybody else want to share a gratitude?
I am thankful that it's April 12 and we are still in session in person and still going strong.
I will second that and I will also just add, I was thankful for some warm sunny days during spring break. For those of us who stayed local.
All right, thank you for sharing gratitude. And we're going to move on to the high school representatives. And I believe we have Olivia and Jade, welcome.
Thank you. Um, so as far as we had a spirit week and our March is charity month conclusion right before the end of spring break. It ended up having a lot more participation than we thought it would have. Um, actually a lot more than even homecoming did.
We also concluded charity month. And then the sophomores won. And then they're doing king size candy bars as their prize. But juniors and then freshmen also got pretty high turnout for money.
Does anybody have any questions for the high school reps?
Yeah, Olivia, you said the sophomores won, I believe. Can you tell us what their cause was again and how much they raised?
They were for the Humane Society. And then they didn't do monetary donations, they did it as. Food and blankets for like the animals. So I don't specifically know how much they actually raised. But they were over a hundred from what I've heard.
Very good, thank you.
Nice. Thank you both for coming and sharing. You guys are more than welcome to stick around or if you have something better to do. Homework, whatever else, you can feel free to split at this time. Thank you again. And then move on to the consent items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items as presented?
So moved.
And support.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasure Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Rivard?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheim?
Yes.
And trustee Bowser?
Sorry, yes.
That's all right. President Reed is absent and me as a yes. So the motion carries. Consent items are approved. And at this time, I would ask for a motion to move into a closed session.
So moved.
Or.
All right. And we will be moving into that closed session. I believe there is a link in the chat. So if you click on the chat tab at the bottom, you should find a link. I'm going to go ahead and take the roll call first. Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasure Gilmore?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Rivard?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheim? Trustee Bowser? President Reed is absent and myself is a yes, so we will move into our closed session. And we'll do that at this time.
Mr. Phallus is back.
Yeah, I got kicked out instead of them.
Everyone did, so sorry about that.
Oh, okay.
Way to hang in there though.
Welcome back.
Nightlights.
Uh, we have at least one attendee is back with us, thank you so much. We apologize for the hiccup on that, we're glad that you hung in there and stayed with us, thank you.
All right. Have everybody. Tracy, Trent, Miss Duj. Still missing Shannon.
Scott, do we have a way to contact the other attendees and let them know that we're back? So Amy was there, I don't know who the John was, but I can send Dean an email. As he reached out to me over the weekend.
There's Shannon. So I think we have all board members and. We are rolling back into open session. Now give Scott a minute to shoot that email out. No pressure, Scott.
No worries, as long as you don't care about spelling.
So I think we can probably move on since discussion is up next. And the first item on there, item A is financial update with Chris Lahey. So while Scott's typing Lahey, Chris, you can fill us in. On finances.
Yes, so my, my update tonight is relatively short. So I'll, I'll jump right into it. As always, we have our year-to-date general fund budget update that's in Board Book, looks like this. It's that exciting time of year where we're going to start really ramping up our, our final budget here in the next month or so. So that'll be coming. But in the meantime, you can see where things are, are landing year-to-date there on that right-hand column. So if anybody has any questions about that, please feel free to reach out, send me an email, give me a call at any time. Second thing on my update is, as always, these are just kind of the staples is the new, you know, bond. Bond fee, there really has been no changes on this sheet since the last board meeting because we actually paid the March. Triangle payment early, and so it was actually reflected on here on the March 8th board meeting. So nothing has changed, we haven't made the April payment yet, so that's why that looks that way. But that will start getting pretty exciting soon because the third thing on my update is we're within a month of our scheduled date to sell the first series of our 2020. School building and site bonds, so very exciting. Scott and I have a, a bond rating call with Standard and Poor's, actually slated for this Wednesday. I'm sure Scott's looking forward to that as I am and the results that come with it. And one thing I wanted to point out as I put this together, we will need to hold a special board meeting on Monday, May 24th, that's not, not slated as a board meeting. And I anticipate this will be the only thing on the agenda to adopt our ratification resolution so we can close on the bonds. So how that works is, is, and I've attached the, the timeline in, in past board meetings, but we'll actually sell the bonds on May 11th and then there's several things that need to take place before we finally close on them in the beginning of June and receive the funds, so more to come on that. I wanted to give the board a little bit of an update on, on the section 23B summer school funding. There's quite a bit to it, and so as I started to type this last week as I was on spring break, I thought, you know what? I'm just going to attach the memorandum that came through from the state of Michigan. So that's in Board Book, it really takes a pretty deep dive on some really neat opportunities that we'll be taking advantage of. And then we, Scott, Jen and I and several others have been working on this. And we will receive $550 per pupil for both credit recovery at the high school level and summer school at the K8 levels there. So more information in the memorandum or we can follow up with any questions that anybody may have on that. It's again, feels a little strange that we don't have more, more news regarding our 2122 budget. So I put in here, the House and Senate, we haven't heard anything yet. Reported to you, the governor's budget came out, geez, it was in February now. My, what I'm hearing is that we'll have details soon of recommendations from the House and Senate. They're going to return later this week from their nice little spring break. So hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll know more and I can give you an update there. And then, you know, it feels strange to not give investment updates anymore. So I had to throw a little something in here. We, I mentioned that we had switched over from My Laugh, who we were earning quite a bit from, to an independent bank cash sweep account that's earning three times the interest. So March was the first month that we really had comparison and you can see we earned $881 in our general, general fund in March, which was great compared to what we earned in February at just $275. But comparison shows that the last month of the pre-pandemic last March, we actually earned over $5,000. So interest rates continue to be low, but we're doing the best we can. Just something to report out on there. So that really is my financial update, any questions anyone has, I'd be happy to answer.
I'll open it up to the board at this time, any questions? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and move on then to discussion item B. Band uniform purchase with Chris Lahey and Mr. Phallus.
Yeah, so this was something that has been a topic of conversation since, since I started in the district over a year ago. I know it's been a need for quite some time. So given the state of our budget and the things that we've been looking at to support our band program, we made the decision to, to move forward by issuing an RFP to get proposals for new band uniforms. So the RFP itself is attached in Board Book and I brought Mr. Phallus here tonight, I asked him to join us. So thank you, sir, to answer any questions that you all may have. And Charlie, I'm not quite sure what you, if you had something to say ahead of time or just here, we're here for a Q and A. So either way, let us know.
Well, at the very least, I can share the picture of the design of the uniforms.
That'd be great, I'll unshare.
All right, hold your breath, folks.
Shouldn't we have a drum, a drum roll here?
Where, where's Matt Blood when you need him? All right. Bam. So these are the designs that we selected for our uniforms next year. You'll see here, it's, it's quite a change from our current uniforms. You know, for multiple reasons like Chris just mentioned, this has kind of been a something we've been having conversations about now for two years. Just the, the current state of our uniforms, you know, they, they serve us well, they're 11 years old now. And that is just about the lifespan of, of those uniforms. Actually, we got another couple of years out of them just because of, you know, this year, obviously we didn't use uniforms and some years passed with some different design moves, but we're so excited to move forward with these designs. This right here is a, is a fairly progressive marching band uniform, which is the huge trend. All of the marching arts are moving towards something like this. This uniform does give us quite a bit more flexibility, like physically, physical more flexibility. It's lightweight. You know, that, like I said, again, the nature of the marching arts and marching band is, is moving a lot more towards athletics. Doing a lot more conditioning and physical activity. Weight training at times, incorporating some, some physical moves in our choreography and whatnot. So that, this, this uniform is going to allow, have us an opportunity to, to do those without being constricted. I thought the design, honestly, folks, I just thought it was so cool. I was so excited that this is printed like this with the, the faded black. And we got a sample the other day and threw it on our drum major, Gabe White. And the entire band lost their minds. It is like the coolest thing ever and we are so excited to see a whole band of people with this uniform on next year. You'll see right here, this is actually kind of like a cape, which gives us more, even more design opportunity. From a show perspective, it's removable right here at the waist and you can see right over here on the right side, the, the inside of the cape is, is red to match the Cedar Springs red. So it's cool, I mentioned that we should do some sort of like matador show and use these as like the red flags for the bulls. So we'll see if that happens or not, but we've got some cool opportunities with this awesome new uniform. So I guess, do we have any questions about either the design or anything else regarding the uniform purchase for this year?
No real questions on my end, I, it's very impressive, it looks. Yeah, it'll be exciting to see everybody out there performing in, in these new uniforms, so.
You know, it's been cool, I'm glad to say that, obviously hosting red flannel is, is an awesome opportunity for multiple reasons for Cedar. But it's really cool for us because so many bands come here that we just get to sit back and instead of being stressed about our own performances, our own shows and whatnot, we get to sit back and, and watch all these other bands. And I've been blown away in the last two years with some of these other bands. I tell you what, tri-counties uniforms are killer, man. There, there were so many schools around here that have just, you know, we all kind of bought uniforms around the same time, 10, 15 years ago. And it seems like it's kind of, you know, the lifespan of a uniform is the lifespan of a uniform. So we're kind of at that time again. And I, I was blown away with how progressive that design was and I'm so excited that we're on that train now, it's so cool.
Yeah, so just to give, just to give a little bit more update on the timeline, we posted this RFP in March. And actually the bid closing, so, excuse me, we, we used that design because that's what, that's what Charlie and April and whoever else was involved in that was really looking for. And so we put that design into the RFP. So that way vendors that, that do these types of uniforms can take that, send in a sample, send in their quote. And so tomorrow is the bid close deadline where companies can submit. And then we'll do a, a public bid opening. The deadline's at noon and then we'll do a public opening at three o'clock, both in the boardroom and with a Zoom link for people to come in. When I posted it, I wasn't quite sure where it would be with COVID and I'm overly optimistic most of the time, so I'll buy mid, mid-April. Anyways, I digress.
I should mention that also, as part of the design process, we did utilize our leadership team and drum majors and whatnot. And they were honestly integral in getting some of these components into our uniforms, things that April and I didn't even think of. It was, it was really cool to see some of their designs. Interwoven into this final product.
Jeff, do you have a question, comment?
Yeah, I, one word, fabulous, they look great. And as I sit here listening to you, Charlie, I'm equally excited that you're so excited about it. And I thank you so much for signing in the program, great job.
Thank you, appreciate it, we are excited to have a normal year next year. Get back on the field.
Tracy, did you also have a comment?
Well, I, I had a question, but he kind of already answered it, which is great. So just kind of the lifespan and then who was involved with the decision. So you kind of touched on that already, like 10 to 15 years expected use out of these new uniforms or would you expect even longer?
Hopefully 10 to 15, that's, that's kind of what we've, with all these different companies that we've been in conversation with. It seems like with new uniform technology, which sounds like a silly thing to say, but everything progresses. With new uniform technology, it seems like 12 to 15 years is the desired lifespan for heavy use. And I would say being in Michigan, we do give our uniforms heavy use, we don't perform inside. You know, you never know what's going to happen with snow and rain, all that sorts of stuff. So I would say, yeah, Tracy, somewhere between 10 to 15 years is what we'd really like to get out of these uniforms. And then also, I don't think, Chris mentioned, I don't know that I didn't say, we, we did put an optional component on that bid of raincoats as well for these uniforms. As in disrepair as our current uniforms are, which please don't let me overstate, they're in current disrepair. The raincoats are somehow even worse. They, I don't know if they melted or what happened, but they are like so, it's, it feels like there's slime all over them and you can't get it out, dry clean, washing, whatever, I'm not sure what happened. And they're no longer waterproof, they are ripped to shreds and don't even provide warmth anymore. We have just stopped wearing them entirely. So I just figured that we should throw that in there, that that was an optional component on that RFP as well.
Great. Very good. Any other questions from board members? It's like everybody said, thank you again.
Of course, thank you folks, appreciate it. Charlie.
And we'll go ahead and move on to discussion item C. The Extended Learning Plan Report with Jen Haberling and Chris Lahey.
All right, so you have a copy of the most up-to-date attendance, which is not a whole lot because we've been on spring break for a bit. And there are no changes to our instructional plans, thankfully, based on where we are with COVID right now. We are able to be in person and I'd be happy to document any public comments or comments from the board regarding this plan.
I have not received any public comments for the plan since our last review of it. We'll open it up to the board at this time, does anybody have any comments?
Hearing. And I, yeah. Matt, I did, I did receive some public comment about, I don't know if it's the return to learn plan or the plan in general, they were very similar to the comments we heard at our last board meeting about as soon as it is possible to make medical choices in the hands of the parents around.
Trent, I think you're muted.
I think we might have lost.
Lost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think the gist of it was a similar comment to what we had last time, just, you know, when, when are the parents going to get, have that say of either wearing a mask for their child or not? Which I believe at this time, you know, we're following the Department of Health guidelines, so it's kind of.
Right.
We're following the law at the moment, so.
I understand, Matt, I just, I just wanted to share. Yeah, sorry, my internet conked out for a second. Yeah, I just, I understand where we're at and I understand we're following what needs to be followed at the state level. I just, I did express, I did hear that expressed to me, so just in fairness to the parents who approached me, I want to make sure I did echo their concerns.
Thank you, Trent, I will definitely put that in the public comment. Anything else?
The other thing worth noting on this plan, just briefly, you know, the point of this, what you see on your screen there is just to reconfirm each month that we are offering in-person instruction and giving that choice. There was some school aid fund, school aid funding that the district will be receiving to the tune of about a half million dollars. And in order to be eligible for that, we had to be offering, at least offering in-person instruction by March 20th. Something obviously we've done all year, but that's part of this reconfirmation that, so we can check that box.
That one question to just pop into my mind, I don't know that there's an answer for it yet, but as parents, students begin to get vaccinated, do we have a plan in place for that? I'm assuming we're still doing masks at the moment, but in the future, I don't know how that's going to play out. Have you guys heard anything or?
As far as.
Uh, once you get vaccinated, do you have to wear a mask?
Oh, got it, yeah, so I've not heard anything in regard to masks, the only thing I've heard about as far as quarantine goes is around, in large scale, for a school application or a school setting, you, you, once you're vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine.
Okay.
For a close contact.
Yeah. Yeah. But I, I'm, you know, even we're wearing masks. Building, even though we've all been vaccinated. But part of that is our return to learn plan, you know, that we. And the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is still clear that when you're in groups, you need to wear masks.
Sure, all right, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No, no questions, I did want to comment, I, I did do some research on it, I watched an interview with, with Fauci and not to get into detail about the vaccine, but they did say even after getting the vaccine, you could still contract the virus and spread the virus. It just reduced the severity of the symptoms that you got. So as we think about what is the future of the return to learn plan look like, we need to make sure that we take that into account as well. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from board? Having none, we'll move on to action item D, social studies text adoption.
All right, well, thank you so much, you will remember last time we met that we had Scott Emery and Lisa Ludwig from the 612 Social Studies Team as representatives, talking through the adoption of TCI as a 612 social studies resource that would be used to determine our curriculum based on the state standards. And they presented you with lots of information about our process last time. I would be happy to entertain any questions you might have about that resource adoption.
Yeah, Jen, I had a question, I, I appreciated that you sent us the links so we could look at it in more detail, so that was great, thank you. And I guess my, my biggest question was just the teachers that reviewed it. How closely were they looking at the content? I know you showed us a chart, kind of where the three different sets of materials ranked. And I don't have it in front of me now, so I apologize, but it seemed like a lot of them were related to how user-friendly they were and some of the additional resources. But I guess I was just curious how closely they reviewed the actual content of material.
That's a great question, Tracy. We only put resources in front of them that went through a pre-screening that already met the content expectations. So that was something that a smaller group did together first. And then we put that in front of the whole 612 social studies team. As part of our review, one of the things that we learned is that TCI was the only resource fully aligned to Michigan's standards, which are slightly different than other states. Most often you hear that textbooks are aligned to Texas, New York or California because those are the heavy hitters in terms of curriculum purchases. And so often you just have to adapt to whatever Texas, California or New York has. But TCI happens to be Michigan-aligned, so it's one of the only that follows exactly Michigan's content. And does it in a way that in many cases lines up with the pacing that we already have in place with the teaching that's already happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? All right. So I'm assuming this is on for next meeting. Because I don't see it on the agenda for this one, Scott.
So Heidi had some questions about it when we met last week to set the board agenda. And so I didn't put it on for action tonight, if we wanted to give people enough time. We are in a little bit of a time crunch in that we would like to get materials ordered as quickly as possible. And we've got some professional learning opportunities for our staff to get involved with that startup in May. And so that's why it's not on the agenda for tonight, we wanted to honor your thinking and honor your feedback and your thoughts in the process. And so that's why it's not on the agenda for tonight. We wanted to honor your thinking and honor your feedback and your thoughts and the process.
Just a quick question, Matt. Did we have any parents? I had a couple reach out asking about it, and I and I forwarded them on, Jen, to you. Did we have any parents take advantage of your offer for them to review that content in your office?
We did not. I, no one reached out to me. And to my knowledge, no one reached out to Robin. I'd be glad to ask her that. We also let the folks who me on the front desk know that if anyone stopped by where the resources were so that they would have access to those.
Okay. They may have, they may have just, after hearing your presentation, had confidence that the teachers gave it a thorough look. I just was curious if any of them took you up on that offer. Thank you.
Sure, and we still have time that that could happen. So if anyone does reach out, I'm glad to share those resources with them.
I did know of a couple parents who had talked about coming. I know they were on spring break last week, and we're going to try to come this week. I don't know for sure if they will, but I think there were a few sure who wanted to.
Yeah, absolutely. We have them right in Robin's office. There are only hard copies of the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade materials. There are not hard copies of the nine through 12 materials, but I'd be glad to share the digital link with them so that they can preview that.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to discussion item E. And that is the 2021 Miola Policy Updates with Mr. Smith. Exciting.
There were a slew of them in the agenda for this time. This is our first read. And so we will, I can respond to any questions that we have for this evening. Or we can, you know, take a little bit more time to read them over the next two weeks, and we can talk about them again during our work session at the end of April. You know, these were a collection of of adjustments and changes that were not significant in terms of substance. It was more about some minute structural changes that they made. So for example, in 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 a couple of the policies that talked about assets or or property, you know, there were some minor changes. There was a minor change. So for example, under property inventory, they refer to our property as as assets. I don't have the specific, I apologize, I don't have that specific piece up to, but they're just minor adjustments in language that were out there. But are there any specific questions based on your initial your initial review that I can speak to or I can try to address? Or be prepared for the next time we meet? So they refer to things as capital assets now instead of fixed assets. So it's not a life changer for anyone, but it's something that's important in the world of of legal review.
Yeah, there were quite a few of those, I'm honest. I'll open it up to the board. Any questions right now? Otherwise, we will continue to review those. And next meeting, if you guys do come up with questions, we can hopefully answer those at that time. All right. Well, that was a big chunk of discussion. We're going to move on to public comments. At this time, looks like we have one attendee. Scott, do we know if they are requesting to speak?
If our attendee would like to speak, if you can raise your hand, then I can unmute your microphone, and you can introduce yourself and make your comment for three minutes. No one had submitted anything online as far as a comment goes or request to make a comment.
Okay. Well, as always, our emails and I believe phone numbers are on the website, and if any public member has comments for us, feel free to contact and reach out to us. We'll go ahead and move on to the action item. We only have one, which is our closed session item. Do I have a motion at this time? If there's a motion, if somebody would motion, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
I would move that the board expels student 20.21.01.
All right, motion is on the floor to expel student 20.21.01, seconded by Bowser. I'll open it up at this time for any discussion.
I'll just say, I mean, anytime we have to expel a student permanently, it's a very serious and unfortunate situation. So I don't think any of us enjoys this decision. However, I I felt it was it was pretty clear based on the behavior of of what needed to be done, but certainly, we want to see the student can and the family to receive support in the next steps.
I would agree with that statement. It's always tough. But yeah, we, the safety of staff and students comes first, and it was very clear based on board policy, based on state law, what needs to be done at this time. So any other discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote. Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide? Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed is absent. Vice President Schaffner is yes. Motion carries. And we'll move on to communication. Board of Education. Is there anything that anyone has for communication?
I'm going to attend the Spring Institute on Friday and a CBA course on Sunday. I was just curious if anyone else was was going to attend virtually as well.
I am not, unfortunately. I've seen a couple of head shakes now, so I'm assuming nobody else is. I'm glad you get to attend, Tracy, and hopefully it's worthwhile. And give us an update when you get back.
I will. When I get back from my from my bedroom.
From your bedroom, yeah, from the virtual experience, please. Any other?
I'd like to communication. Yeah, I'd like to communicate a special thank you, Matt, for being our acting president, helping us out. Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah, my pleasure. That's the role of the vice president. And I will say that Heidi has been more than more than generous. She, this is her first time being absent as president, so this is the first time I've had to fill in for her. So it's it's been a little while. Hopefully, she recovers and and gets better soon. All right, we'll move on to superintendent. Mr. Smith, do you have anything for us?
So I, we did not have an update from the Kent County Health Department last week. Typically, we meet on Wednesdays, and they give us an update, and on the following Friday, because we didn't have data from last week with everyone out on spring break, we received our our update today. And as I had shared in our, in the Red Hawk Weekly from the week of the ending on April 2, that we were in the top spot in the county for cases per 100,000, followed by Sparta and Kent City and our friends at in Comstock Park. We've now, in this week, we've now been knocked out of that top spot by Sparta. They're the ones that are leading the pack. And and we're in second place. You know, not to make light, it just means that the viruses, there's a lot of cases out there, and we just have to be diligent and continue to follow our protocols and and continue to be thankful for every day that we have when we can be in person and continue to engage and welcome students on campus. This is a big week for us. Jen can attest, we got several students engaging in some high-level testing. And I don't know if Jen wants to 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 share some insights, but you know, it's it's really about, you know, many are asking, well, why test during this season of COVID? But, you know, it's important to get a baseline and to get an understanding of of where we are, but it's also a great opportunity and experience for our students to to engage in that kind of situation. And it's like a practice, you know, get out there, do your best and and see where we can go. So Jen, I don't know if you want to share any of the insights or any of the planning that's happening in the different buildings as far as spring testing goes.
Yep, it's definitely been a little bit more complex as COVID sheds a little bit of extra complexity to everything. But our teams at the building level have been diligent in following the rules. There are some new ones this year. And I'm thankful that we will be able to be in person for that testing. We gave all of our online families the opportunity to select to come in for testing because there is not an at-home option. And most of them said, yes, we would like to bring our kids in for that opportunity. So that says a lot about the culture here and about the importance of knowing where your students are and having the right data to make decisions going forward. So while I I would guess that none of us enjoyed state testing, it's it is an important experience for our students and especially for those kiddos in high school who could be going on to other opportunities where they might need a score in order to get there. So we're thankful that we can be in person in order to give that opportunity.
So that's it from our side.
All right. Thank you. I will say my daughter's freaking out a little bit on the SATs, but it'll be good. So, no, she's excited, sort of. All right, we'll move on to planning. And our next regular board, actually, it should be a work session coming up next. Help me with the date, April 24th, I think. Is that right? 26th, thank you. And otherwise, I don't have anything else that I'm aware of.
We've got the meeting on May 10, and then remember the meeting that Chris shared on May 24. We'll need to take some action around the bond, the sale of the bonds.
That one should be very brief.
And we'll keep everybody posted as far as virtual versus in-person. I'm assuming the next one might be virtual, but again, we'll we'll keep everybody posted. And that's all I have for planning, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.
See ya.